Okay, good afternoon. Uh, we're gonna go, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and continue signing folks in. We're gonna go around the room. I'm sorry, I'm Jim Bagby. I'm the Executive Director of the TDC. And just like we've done the last couple of times we held this meeting, everybody goes around, we introduce which company you're with, and then I'll introduce some of the, all the presenters, and then we'll get started. Okay? So let's just start over here with the planning staff and go down the row here. Let's get to the front row over here. Then go back to that third row.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Okay, we're all here for support. Okay, who else didn't? There's a few on the front row, go ahead and introduce. Well, go ahead, who are you?
(inaudible)
Okay, okay. Okay. Who else? I know there were three or four that were signing in. Who else hadn't identified themselves or whatever? Oh, there you go, yep. Okay, and the last two signing in. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, is there somebody over here? No, Junior identified himself.
(inaudible)
Oh, Junior, come over.
(inaudible)
Okay. And the last person.
(inaudible)
Okay. A couple of things, please turn your cellphones off or put them on vibrate during the meeting so that we don't have a lot of interruptions. We will try to not keep you here any longer than absolutely necessary. The, uh, we are recording this, so just like the BCC does the live streaming recording, we're using that, that system also. At the end, we will have a question and answer session to answer all your questions, but you have to wait on the microphone, and Junior from Code Enforcement will bring you the microphone because you have to, we have to get you on the tape and get the question, and then we'll probably repeat the question. Uh, I want to introduce the presenters. I think I already introduced myself. Of course, the, the man hosting this event, Brian Kellenberger, who is our Director of Beach Operations, okay, for Visit South Walton. And then he will be followed by Jeff McFay, our Lead Code Enforcement Officer, wherever Jeff is, yep, over here. And then Jeff will turn it over to Bobby Stewart from Turtle Watch, or no, who's talking? Okay, then that would explain that, okay? Huh?
Valerie Lofton.
Oh, Valerie Lofton, I guess I should say her name. Okay. Okay. And then Valerie will turn it over to Sergeant Will Curtis, who's here representing the Sheriff's Department, and he'll turn it over to Chris Lambert, who's recent, who's, well, I'll let him explain who he is, was South Walton Fire District, who will then turn it over to Sammy Sanchez if he makes it. If not, Chris will be talking about beach bonfires. And, uh, then they'll turn it back over to Brian for closing comments, and, uh, question and answer. Okay, so, before, before we close the books, anybody not signed in, because if you've not signed in, you're, you're not captured. That's the last person to get captured, because now the training will start. So young, we brought in some chairs, there's plenty of chairs up here, you guys can stand. It might be an hour, hour and a half, two hours, the way it went last year. Anybody have any questions, me? Thank y'all for taking time, I really appreciate, you know, we, we want to have the best season we've ever had. Uh, we had some, some challenges last season, to be honest with you, uh, and, uh, we're, we're working with the Board of County Commissioners to try to address those challenges. Uh, we, for those of you who don't know, on March the 10th, I think currently scheduled for 3:00 PM, uh, but they scheduled another thing for 3:00 PM today at their morning meeting, uh, there's gonna be the Meeting on the Beach Activities Ordinance Workshop with the Board of County Commissioners, but that's tentatively scheduled for March the 10th right now. So I know we'll see all of you back here on March 10th at 3:00 PM, uh, and we will post Brian's working on the changes. Sammy doesn't have to sign in, but come on in, Sammy, we got you a chair. Uh, oh, now we got the sheriffs out, we got everybody, okay. Uh, but we will post the changes on our website and try to post the proposed changes on the county website. Uh, Brian has promised me he will have the draft ordinance changes to me today. I will try to get them completely reviewed within 24 hours, and we will get them posted, and then everybody will know exactly what we're recommending or not recommending. Any questions for me? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Brian. Thank y'all again for coming.
Appreciate it. Like I said, my name's Brian Kellenberger, I'm Director of Beach Operations. Uh, that puts me in charge of Code Enforcement and Beach Maintenance for Visit South Walton. Appreciate your time this afternoon to, uh, go over all the rules and regulations and how we expect to interact with beach vendors on the beach this year. As Jim alluded, there was a few, or more than a few, uh, issues last year that we would like to have different this year. Uh, some of it, uh, I think can be done internally through the beach vendors, some of it will be done through, uh, uh, beach water, or beach activities ordinance revisions that, as Jim said, we, uh, have, have sent some recommendations to the County Commission. We have a workshop scheduled for March 10th, and from there, we'll go through a couple of public hearings, and, uh, the BCC will make final decisions on how they would like the ordinance to read. So, to get started, John Irvin is the Director of Marketing Communications, and he has a little bit to say.
Please. Yes, and thank you for our distinguished attendees. Would you like to say anything to our audience real quick?
Spring break's almost here, and I appreciate you so much, because you are truly some of the first people that our visitors see, so thank you so much, and we're, we're gonna try to make this smooth and the least harmful on our small businesses. Thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Um, I get the fluffy part, but it lasts really short, so we'll get back to the serious stuff in a minute. Uh, if you don't know where you're at, surprisingly enough, not everybody does, this is South Walton, and the collection of 16 neighborhoods is a powerful market, uh, and in fact, last summer, the number one coastal tourism economy in the state of Florida was South Walton. However, awareness continues to still be something that we work at every day. So, we are not Panama City, we are not Destin, and you have as much to do with that as we do. You are in contact with the consumers every day. If you've exceeded the service expectations and, and made the visitors happy, and in dialogue with your team, they're like, "Destin's my favorite place in the world," well, when they go home and tell their friends at church and their office, "I had the best vacation at Destin," where do you think those people, through earshot and word of mouth, may end up next year? Not necessarily in the neighborhood where you have beach services. So, it matters that South Walton and the 16 neighborhoods are part of your mantra. The investments that are being made on your behalf to keep your businesses healthy and growing are important. So we please ask you to keep that in mind as you're bringing staff up to speed this year for another great season in South Walton. You're seeing a little bit of what gets pushed out to represent all the wonderful things that you can do in South Walton. You also probably are aware that the brand mark has changed. The script logo that we use to represent this destination has been replaced by what some call the sun wave. You have it in front of you on visitor guides, beachgoer guides, there's a sticker in there. Um, there's merchandise at the Visitor Center now that is available to everyone, and, um, again, when it represents a multi-billion dollar industry that is tourism in this neighborhood, we, we want to be collectively embracing it and supporting it. It's to your own best interest, so we thank you for however you can include that in your day-to-day activities. The other part of the consumer-facing and marketing is the beach safety campaign. We're very proud to fund the lifeguard service and the beach safety campaign, which includes a lot of different ways that messages are delivered, through smart, uh, smartphones and geo-fencing, behavioral targeting, deck graphics on beach walkovers, uh, and in the printed collateral that you have. So if your teams don't make the beach flag warning system a mandatory piece of knowledge for all of your staff, you're putting your own consumer's future at risk. We make it very easy in all the materials, that the Visitor Center has additional materials, again, signage in multiple locations, and a text number, 67463, you can text the word "safety," and you get an update every day about the beach flag conditions, and if they're changed during the day, you will get an auxiliary send. So that information is in the materials that you have from us, and we certainly hope that you help push that forward on your websites, uh, and in your, in your dialogue with your consumers. Lastly, for those of you that may have Facebook pages, we actually have free software that you are permitted to have, it's a matter of just a few clicks, and you can include the, the real-time beach safety flag, uh, updates on your Facebook page, and they will feed, which again is another great, um, way to have a cohesive, consistent message and try to keep our consumers healthy and want to come back over and over and over. So, thank you, if you have any questions afterwards, we'll be here, and remember, the Visitor Center is there for your clients and for you, and the new logo, hopefully it's something that you can all help keep the awareness of South Walton going, so we can compete in this very difficult market. There's a lot of places in the state of Florida and in the US that would love to attract the consumers that are coming here, so we're working to try to keep them visiting you repeatedly. So, thank you very much for everything that you guys do to take care of great service levels for our visitors. Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
That's good. Yeah, you watch me.
Okay, we have a few new members to our organization to like to introduce. First one is Haley Lafflin, our Beach Ambassador. She started first of the summer last year, and was out there most summer, and you'll see her again spring break and part of the summer. Uh, Carrie Peters is our new Communication Coordinator, and Dave Goodman is our new Code Enforcement Officer. Both Dave and Carrie are friendly to the organization, and you'll see them out and about. Uh, Jeff McVay's up to give us a briefing on the permitting process, uh, new vendor permits, and supplemental items, as well as how the code affects beach vendors.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, for the most part, I'd throw a number at you, there's 60 folks in the room, we probably had hard feelings with three or four of y'all, and that's, by me, by my standard, that's pretty good odds, considering the amount of chairs that you guys put on the beach, and umbrellas you put on the beach, and, and the services that you do provide. Um, we'll go, I'm not gonna read you the ordinance line by line, last year we spent a little more time on the ordinance, you got it in front of you, it's in your book. Um, we've made sure every company did have a copy of that, if there's books left over, when everybody's getting finished, we'll hand those out to you if you want some more of them, so, uh, the ordinance, by verbiage, has not changed, the biggest issues we had last year with beach vendors, uh, was leave no trace, and, uh, stacking stuff on the boardwalks that were not being rented, and I, when I say that, you, you deliver a set of chairs one time, and you got two chairs, and the next day you deliver two more chairs, we've only got two chairs rented, well then we got a stack of 10 or 12 sets at every neighborhood beach access, and you're, you're only renting two or three. So, but, if you rent them today, that's fine, if you're gonna rent them again tomorrow, store them east or west of the access, not against the access or the signs, just give us a little room around those, it creates, one, it's, it's, creates a liability to both you and the county for somebody stripping on your chairs, or your guys hitting their chairs trying to get equipment out from under boardwalks, so just leave them one way or the other, eight or 10 feet, we're good with that, we're not gonna give you a whole lot of problems about it, but the make, the biggest issue is, if they're not renting tomorrow, put them in your truck and take them somewhere else, because we don't need to become the storage facility to hold the neighborhood access, we don't have room there anyway. So when you start storing a bunch of chairs, then it just creates issues for us on down the road, because now, instead of four chairs, we got 12 there. Um, the other, the other thing is the leave no trace, the, the leaving your chairs out of, on the beach overnight. Um, we can usually determine, okay, somebody drug a chair off of a stack, when your guys put them out, they pick up eight or 10 or 12 of them and carry them out there and set them down and set their chairs up. When somebody snatches your stack, they drag them down there and see the track marks, and umbrellas aren't drilled in, or whatever. Um, if we find them square on the beach, umbrellas drilled in, opened up, nice and pretty, footprints all around it, and there's no sign that it's been moved there, we can pretty well figure it out, you just missed a set of chairs. We understand that we missed a set of chair park, we, we can buy that a time or two, but when it's the same locations, the same chairs, over and over and over, then it starts kind of, it creates issues for us, because then our phone starts ringing, and we're having to focus on this area over here, so. We understand missing a chair here and there, um, we, we are gonna change our strategy on that a little bit. When we find it, we're still gonna call you and tell you we got your chairs, but because of some issues that we had through the summer, um, we're gonna call you and tell you we got them, we're not gonna leave your chairs on the beach, but when you come get your chairs, you will get some paperwork. We're not gonna write you a ticket the first time, but you will get paperwork. So the whole, hey, you know, we found some of your chairs, we're gonna leave them by the boardwalk, don't leave them tomorrow night, that's, um, that's not something that we can continue to do, because it's created us some problems trying to, trying to work with you guys has, has bit us in the rear end, and we just can't, simply can't do it, so, um, as far as the leave no trace goes, if we find it, we'll call you and tell you we got it, we'll take it, we'll give you some paperwork, so that builds our documentation for the next time we run into the same issue. So, that's the big issue that we got. The ordinance is, what, 17 pages long, that's the only two problems we have with vendors, um, as a whole, at large. So, focus on those areas, if you can help us with that, make sure if you got outline sites, you're just getting your stuff off the beach at night, and, um, if you're leaving on the beach, toe of the dune, just don't stack it on signs, change it to signs, and, and leave it there for next week, or next week, or next week. Uh, as far as the, the permitting process goes, in your list, you got the, the vendor checklist, there's a couple of changes to that, not anything that's groundbreaking. The acknowledgement letter, which is, says that you got the, you've got the ordinance and have read it and understand it, so that way when we have to start saying, hey, we've, we're running into these issues, and the comments we get back was, we, you know, we didn't know, but when you sign the acknowledgement letter, that says you got a copy of the ordinance, you read it and understand it, so we're good with that. The application, self-explanatory, who's not done an application so far? Who's, you, you, you have not done an application. When you do the application, uh, Letitia, the staff in our office is gonna give you a stack of stuff, it's got a checklist, it'll have that checklist, simple, self-explanatory, it's not hard to come about. Uh, the biggest thing that sent permits back last year, got permits denied, was, uh, insurance, site plans, and, uh, what was the other thing? Consent letters. Uh, the, when I say consent letters, I'm not, I'm talking about the, uh, permission to vend letters from the upland property owner. So that's the three biggest issues we had. So when you draw a site plan, the site plan needs to have the dimensions east and west, the dimensions north and south, it needs to have, if you're gonna put boxes, or, uh, have water sports corridors, all of that stuff needs to be drawn on the map somewhat to scale. We understand that we're not gonna get down to the thirty, thirty second of an inch, or whatever, but as long as we can look at it and understand, he's got 600 foot of beach, he's got eight boxes, he's got a water sports corridor, as long as we can figure that stuff out, then we're comfortable with that. Uh, and then the permission or consent letter from the upland property owner, uh, that'll be your contract, if you got a contract with them, you know, blackout the, the, how much they're paying you, or you're paying them, or whatever, and, um, we don't care about that, we just need the today's date, the expiration date, and who's, somebody's signature saying you can vent on their property. Uh, inventory lists, self-explanatory, permission, the life-saving training certification mandatory for all water sports. That was a, a big, created some tailspin last year. Uh, our interpretation of that is, if you have a water sports business, if you're offering water sports, anything that happens on the water, if you're doing it, if it happens in the water, then you, you have to have some sort of life-saving measures. Our understanding is, just, the, what, the consensus we've come to as a group is, you have to have some form of life-saving something, CPR, AD, first aid, somewhere in there. It doesn't say that you have to be a lifeguard, it says life-saving training. So, if you got that for the purposes of the application, that's what we're accepting. Um, I know that was an issue last year in the permitting process, it's kinda sent us into a tailspin more than one time. Checks, receipt, beach permits, uh, beach item permit and decals. If you put, uh, volleyball nets out on the beach, they're approved in your site plan, which they have to be on your site plan. If they're approved in your site plan, when you get your permit number from Letitia and her crew, put the permit number on the poles, because what happens is, we go down through there, and we see vendor boxes with all the numbers on it, and a 4x4 post with the volleyball net on it, the volleyball net's not permitted if it don't have that permit number on it. We don't know that it's permitted. So, if you get there and your volleyball net's gone, and you didn't put your permit number on it, that's probably why, so it's somewhere piled in a pile over at our place. So just, anything that's on the beach has to have your permit number on it, and then we'll have the ability to go look at that permit, through that permit number, and determine if it's approved to be on your site. Make sense? Everybody good with me on that? If it's on the beach, put your permit number on it. Uh, the permitting process, Brian hit that a little bit. My suggestion or recommendation to you, do what you want to, get ahead of the crowd, go ahead and get your permit done, you've done and you're through. Uh, if you choose to wait, um, it's, my goal is, and I'll, if, before your permit's approved, it'll go across, uh, Brian and myself's desk, so, we will do our dead level best to not have any permits in our possession over seven days. What holds that up is your checklist not being complete. So if it's on the checklist, get it dialed in, if you have a question or whatever about something, call myself, or, if you can't get me, happens to be a day off or whatever, Junior, or we'll get you, we'll get you where you need to be, but we'll, I don't think it'll be an issue. New vendor permits, if you, if you have not got a vendor permit from last year, you have to have a vendor permit before you can provide a service on the beach. We understand that we're a little behind the curve, because we're, we're waiting on the updates, however, if you had one last year, it's extended till May the 22nd. If you don't have one, then that will need to be rolling pretty quick, okay? We'll do our best to get it back to you, but you gotta get it to us first. So, the permits are available today, if you want a copy of a permit to take with you when you leave here, Letitia's got it in her hands, get what Letitia will, we'll, we'll get you the permits, okay? So, if you want one, ask for it today, you can leave with it today, the sooner you get it back, it goes through their process, then we get it. So, if you don't have a permit from last year, you need to get that happening, because it's gonna, I mean, I understand, we'll give you, we're gonna give you a few minutes to get it together, but we can't give you all summer to get it together. Our contact information's on the back page of your agenda, if you've got the agenda, you've got our phone numbers, and emails, and everything, we'll, one of the three of us will be out just about all the time, so our schedules will roll from well before daylight to well after dark. So if you need any one of us, the easiest thing to do is to jot all three of us an email, and whichever one of us is working right then, we'll get back, we, or the next one of us that comes on duty will get to you, or whatever, or you can call and leave us a message if we don't answer you. If, if we don't answer you, you know, go down the list, do whatever you need to do, but the quickest way to get somebody to call you back, shoot us an email, all three of us get it at the same time, and then whoever's working, we know that that's our responsibility to get back with you, we're not gonna leave you hanging. We've, like I said, at the beginning of the meeting, if these, what was my number, 50 of you sitting in here, three or four of you probably don't like us, most of you we can speak to and get along with. So, understanding that, when we, when we leave here, absolutely nothing personal between us and you, your job is to provide a service to people on the beach, our job is enforce the ordinance, so that's what we want to do, we want to, we want to understand that close a business every day, everybody might not be happy, we understand that, but if people choose to make it personal, then it makes it, it sends it down the wrong road, and we don't want to go there with you, so. All right? Valerie? Valerie's gonna help you with your texting program.
I didn't really ring it, because I was told 10 minutes ago I was supposed to come up here and talk. Hi, Josh.
Hi, Valerie.
Um, let's see, I'm Valerie Lofton with the South Walton Turtle Watch, and I think I'm supposed to talk about the texting program, which a lot of you used last year, and it worked very well, I'm just, I think those of you who used it, um, may have really appreciated it, because you found that you could get on the beach a lot earlier, because we are pretty quick clearing the beaches. Um, we had a couple of areas where, um, someone was sick or on vacation, so I and several other people had to walk two or three sections in one morning, so it took a little bit longer, but we got it covered. Um, there is a page in the book that talks about the texting program, if you're not familiar with it, and you want, um, more clarification, you can ask any of these guys up here, I think, or you are welcome to email me, if you want to email me, here's the email address, I'm gonna say it once, lofton, L-O-F-T-O-N, project@gmail.com. And I'll try to help you out, I am not very good with, um, technology, but between the two of us, we can probably figure it out. Um, what our job is, is to check the beaches from May 1st to October 31st for turtle tracks. Sea turtles come in and nest on the beaches for six months out of the year, and then the hatchlings hatch out for about four months of the year. And sometimes we see every sea turtle nest, and sometimes we don't. If we have a very rainy season, season like we did, um, two years ago, we did miss quite a few nests. Um, we would get up in the morning, it would be pouring down rain, and we'd look, but, you know, you know from being on the beach, that when it's raining hard, it's hard to see a lot of tracks. Um, so what we do is, we mark the tracks, whether it's a nest So what we do is, we mark the tracks, whether it's a nest or not a nest, and we'll put survey flags out, and then we'll continue walking so that we can clear the beach, so you guys can get on the beach, the vendors can. Once you guys are on the beach, if you will at least steer clear of the survey flags, if you see any, and work around them, so that way when we come back, we can take our measurements and monitor everything we need to monitor, and, and if we need to, we can move our nest away from, if it's too close to the water line, or whatever we have to do. If you see a turtle come up during the daytime, we would really love for you to give us a call. If you don't have a number for us, then just call the sheriff's department, and they'll contact Sharon, who will contact one of us, depending on what beach it's on. I don't really know what else I was supposed to cover. That was good? All right. Are there any questions? All right. I do want to put one little tidbit out there, if you're on the, the east end from Camp Creek Lake towards Camp Helen, I'm going to have a little get-together with the vendors over at Fawnville, so if you're interested in doing that before the season, then again, shoot me an email, and I would like to pass the word because I want to meet with you guys, we're all on the beach, and I want to see face-to-face everybody, and I'd like everybody to see my team face-to-face so that we can work together and take care of our beaches. We have a lot of people tromping on our beaches during the season, which is wonderful, but we want them to be nice beaches for the visitors to come see. You had a question?
Yeah, just a quick, I think I missed a little text last year, is that going to roll over, I need to have a brief.
No, it should, if you're still in the same sections, everything should still work the same. Yep. Yeah, it should still work the same, unless you have a new section you're covering this year. All right, thanks.
Good afternoon, and thank you for all being here. I am Captain Audie Rowell, I'm the Bureau Chief over the South Walton Bureau. I'm going to try and be brief with, as quickly as I can. We have two operational plans running this year. Our first operational plan is what we call our college operational plan, it's mostly in the scenic Gulf area. That's going to start March 28th and run through, I'm sorry, February 28th and run through about March 28th. Our second operational plan will be in the seaside Rosemary Beach area, that's what we call our high school spring break plan, that's going to run March 29th through about, I think, April 18th. So we don't look, we don't expect a whole lot of changes. As y'all know, we're pretty zero tolerance when it comes to underage drinking. I think we arrested about 800 last year, about 1100 the year before. Everybody goes north, which is unique for some people who go from Miramar Beach to Funniac Springs 50 miles later and still not at the jail. So it's kind of interesting to see the reaction. But a couple of things that I want to make you aware of, number one, emergency vehicles. Obviously, if you're a vendor on the beach, please stay away from the accesses as much as possible in case we need to get in there. Don't leave anything around the beach accesses so we can, so we can access that as long as South Walton, along with South Walton Fire. Last year, I know some of the vendors, you have relationships with deputies, we have no problem with that, we encourage that, but if you do have a problem, if you see a fight, if you see something going on, please call our dispatch, so that information can go out to all the deputies that are, that are in the area. Call in one deputy and get him responding, you may not be able to get ahold of them, he may be on something else, he may be working on something else, so please call our dispatch center, and that way we can get the information out to everybody. Lastly, if you do have an issue with the operation, or you need to talk to somebody, I'm going to give you a couple of numbers to call. One is my cell phone number, which is 850, I'll give you a minute, 850-401-4599. Also Lieutenant Robert Gray, most of you probably know who Lieutenant Robert Gray is, he will be one of our incident commanders during the college spring break, his number And then Lieutenant Savage, he will be over our operational plan for our high school spring break, his number is 850-401-4073. Again, if you have an emergency, or you need a deputy quickly, please don't call one of us, please call dispatch or call 911, and we'll get to you as soon as possible. Do I have any questions?
Questions is in.
Questions is in, sorry. All right, thank you. Brought you some audio visual here.
I'm Chris Lambert, I'm the lifeguard supervisor slash interim beach safety director. Next slide, please. What I want to talk to you first about is beach safety in our program. Out there we have 10 lifeguard towers, two guards at each tower. These guards are USLA trained, that's the highest level of certification you get in the United States, and also first responder train, which is called emergency medical responder now. Each tower, or, excuse me, the, there's six towers with ATVs at it, both the tower and ATV have what we call basic life support medical, that's oxygen, AED, and a whole host of first aid equipment. We are open at the towers 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We also have two skis out there for the, in the water. If you remember one thing today to take away is, we are part of the 911 system, we are part of the fire department, when something goes wrong in the water, dial 911 first. Because we all listening to the radios out there, we're right on dispatch, we're part of the 911 system, so use that. And, and when you do that, one of the most important things you can pass on to us is, what is the closest beach access number that you're by, or the condo you're behind? Because without that, it's really tough to pinpoint where you're at. So the closest beach access, each one is numbered and named, so just try to get familiar with your area down there and telling the 911 system where they're at. Last thing, and this is going to be real quick, missing child. Missing child, lost person, missing child, if the parents come up to you, they're looking for their child, they're going to be pretty upset. First thing you do, dial 911. Don't call your buddy lifeguard, who's usually off-duty, I won't mention any names here, and tell me you've got a missing child, because I'll tell you to hang up and call 911. Because that's the way the system works, they'll take all the information, and then they'll dispatch us out on the rovers looking for them to help. Next slide. Chief Tower was supposed to be here to address this next section, so we'll just keep this short. Hurricanes and weather, just remember that when a hurricane's approaching, we're going to have possibly two types of closure, that's going to be double red water closure, and then we could also have a beach closure. So you're going to want to plan ahead to get your equipment off the beach, because once they put up the do not cross yellow tape there, you're not going to be able to get on the beach to get your items off. That's all I had, I guess we're going to do questions at the end. This is Sammy Sanchez, the fire marshal of the rough.
Good afternoon. Could y'all get a taller podium for me?
Sorry, you want a stool?
Stool would be great. So I appreciate you all coming out, I know you guys are busy, we'll try to keep it short. Just a couple of things I want to talk about, bonfires, fireworks, two of the main ones. I know a lot of you are in bonfire business, and if you, I can reiterate to you, bonfires are a privilege, please remember that. We are probably the only county in the state of Florida that still allows them. Okay? And that hasn't come with a lot of talks and debates, and really, we have a good relationship with the Turtle Watch folks, but in order to keep that relationship, I need you guys to help me. If you don't help me, these bonfires can go away, okay? It's just a matter of the commissions ain't yea or nay, it's that simple. Again, they are a privilege. You get one chance with me, if I call you in my office, I'm probably going to read you the riot act, and then we're good. If I have to call you back again, we will not issue you a permit again. We, we have the authority to do so. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to enhance the experience for people to come here, but at the same time, we're also trying to make sure that you are providing a safe atmosphere for your customers. So keep that in mind. Annual permits, there's a lot of confusion, if you are a beachfront property owner, you can get an annual permit, you have to send, submit us a letter indicating you want an annual permit. Now, do you still have to call us every time you have a bonfire? Yes. And the reason being, it's protecting you, that's so no one else comes on your property and has a bonfire, so let us know. I'm going to give you that number in case you don't have it, it's for our dispatch center, it is 850-267-0167. Very, very important that you call us if you are on an annual bonfire permit. And of course, all the other permits are still $50. Those can be obtained Monday through Friday at the South Walton Fire District headquarters, and I believe you can get them online, except on the weekends. We're not open on the weekends, we've talked about it, logistically, we just can't do it right now. So if you have customers that are coming in on Saturday and want to bonfire on Saturday, make sure they get to us by Friday. And please don't call at 4:20 and make Ms. Robbie stay there, you know, extra, trying to get your bonfire, which she will, and if she was here, she'd probably get mad because I said, so she will, but please try not to do that to her. Fireworks. Last year, they were still, they were illegal, and they're still illegal this year. Until the state of Florida changes that, all fireworks are considered, considered illegal. Anything that launches, anything explodes, anything that goes boom, anything goes, lifts up in the air, is considered an illegal firework. Sky lanterns, I know a lot of you have venues where somebody's getting married, whatever the case may be, and they want to set these sky lanterns off, those are also considered illegal. It's in Florida statute 791. I didn't want to bore you with the language, but it's in there, I promise. And this picture actually shows sky lanterns that were set off, and then you see what happens when they landed. And that is why they are considered illegal. You can't direct them, they're steered by wind, you don't know where they're going to land, there's no guarantee they're going to go off or be extinguished when they land, and who's going to clean up the mess? So that kind of all wraps up in Florida statute 791. The only way you can have fireworks, and I get this all the time, hey, I'm staying at a resort, they said I was shooting them off the beach, it's okay. No, it's not okay. Unless you have a ATF low explosive license, and then you still have to come see me for a permit. And I can tell you right now, there's about five ATF license permit holders that I see on a yearly basis. Other than that, everything else is illegal. And I get it, it's hard to stop it, I've been down there, I've seen it myself, especially on the 4th of July, but I'm asking you to help us with that. And I think that is it. Anything else? Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, beach operations, beach maintenance, we're the crew that keeps the beaches clean, our responsibilities are to pick up garbage left at our garbage collection stations. Per the ordinance, beach vendors are required to clean up their areas where they vend, so I expect everybody to do that, keep the beaches looking nice and clean. Storm preparation, in the event of a storm, there will be evacuation notice that give everybody the time to get their equipment off the beach, using the proper equipment. So make sure that you have proper phone numbers and emails with us, so that we can get you notified properly. A few things I want to go back and touch on, the permitting process for this year. The permits for 2014 were extended to May 22nd, 2015. The reason for that was, is there are some minor revisions to the ordinance that are being considered, and it was, felt like that we could get it all ironed out by that, by that time. So we still, you can still come in and apply for a new permit, and we encourage that. It will be a provisional permit until May 22nd, and at that time, when the permits, that provisional permit was extended May 22nd, when the decision is made to extend those to the end of the season, if you've already paid, then of course you won't have to pay again. If you decide not to be in business, you can drop out at that time if you're not happy with the ordinance revisions. Any new people that were not vendors last year have to get a new permit now. So come in to the permitting or the planning department, letitia and crew have the permit applications, and they'll get you set up. As Jeff said, there are some supplemental requirements, please pay close attention to the checklist, and the quickest way to get your permit processed is to make sure you have all that information and it is accurate. Bring that in, the processing time is cut dramatically. On the bonfires, of course, we're all, here are all vendors, but in order to do a bonfire, if you're offering that bonfire as a service, you have to be a permitted vendor. So make sure that if you're in that business, be permitted, and that you pull the bonfire permit, not the owner of the property. If you're offering it for a service, you're expected to pull that permit. So with that being said, that's all I have to say. Jim Bagby has a few closing comments, and then we'll take some questions and answers.
Just a couple of things to finish up. The, we are working with Visit Florida on a certified tourism ambassador program, which is an online training, basically it's customer service, and one of the reasons that we stepped up to be one of the guinea pigs was because of some of the stuff that happened last year, and we thought, anything we can do to help everyone, whether they are bed tax collectors or restaurateurs or beach vendors or whoever, to provide better customer service to all our visitors and guests, we need to do. You can get that training, have your folks go to training@visitsouthwalton.com, and we'll get them signed up, we'll get them in, and it's everybody, we're, everybody in the TDC is going, it's free, okay? We, the only thing is, we track which companies, and after a company reaches about 90%, we're going to recognize them as a certified tourism ambassador company, okay? Because we, we want everyone to have that customer service in this destination. Kind of goes back to what John said, this is South Walton, this is not Destin, this is not Panama City, this is South Walton, and we want everybody that works in South Walton, which is most of the people in South Walton, in the tourism industry, to know that that's where they are and to help us by being good ambassadors for this destination. And that's not just when you're out working on the beach till 6, 7, 8, 9 o'clock with the bonfire or whatever, but that's when you go to have a cocktail after work, or that's when you go out to dinner, or that's when you go anywhere to the grocery store, you are still an ambassador for this destination. People will ask you, in, you know, our website, John talked about, you can reference the beach flag, the texting program, our website is another good resource, visit southwalton.com. We will roll out the new iteration of the website, hopefully in the next six weeks, but well before summer, and it will be chock full of information on all the events, everything that's going on in South Walton. But we are stewards of this destination, all of us, not just the TDC, not just the county staff, not just the county commissioners, but every one of us is a steward of this destination, and if, when you think of it like that, whether you're a Turtle Watch or a beach vendor, or a bonfire provider, or county staffer, whatever, it, you understand how important this place is. The, with that, oh, does everybody get the connections? Everybody in here signed up for our weekly little newsletter, email blast, okay? If you don't, you can go to our website and sign up for the connections, it has a lot of information about what's going on in the destination and what we're trying to do to help folks. So I will turn it back over to Brian, and we will have questions, remember, raise your hand, Junior will bring you the microphone. This microphone, you have to hold it real close to speak into it, but we want to make sure you get, we get your questions recorded for this meeting. Thanks.
The phone number for Sheriff, Sheriff's Office, Walton County Sheriff's Office, 892-8111, 850 area code. Any questions? Good time to ask.
Thank you. I was just curious.
If you can identify your name.
Tammy Reinhardt, Emerald Coast Hydro Bikes.
Yep.
I was just curious if there is a place like templates for the beach flag signs that we could print or put on our websites?
Yes, ma'am, we have copies we can give to you via PDF, or we actually have the signs, is that correct? Yeah. If you can get with John Irvin after the meeting, he can set you up.
Gary Swank, beach steer guys, this might be directed to Jeff, on the permit application, Jeff, it says proof of cell number, how do I provide that? What do I need to show?
What we need, that's, we just need a phone number, not necessarily proof of, just need a phone number and specifically, marine radios, if you've got water sports, the parasail guys, so you have to have a radio license or proof of that radio communication through a phone, I mean, we're not asking you for copies of bills or nothing, just.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any more questions?
Tom loves you.
Yeah, Tom Losi with Yellow Board Adventures over at Watercolor. Um, just to clarify it, so if we have a permit, we have an extension till May 22nd. To renew it, we don't, we should wait now until the 10th, until that meeting?
Yes, sir. Uh, you, you- Right, the 2014 permits were extended to May 22nd, 2015. Okay. So the reason was is because there is, uh, at the end of last year, we, uh, were asked to give recommendations to, uh, revisions to the beach activities ordinance in order to mitigate, minimize, uh, some of the issues we had at the public beaches last year. As part of that, recognizing that it would take some time to get the ordinance, uh, into public meetings, discussed and then decided on, uh, realizing that it would affect some people's business plans, we had to have a mechanism to let them opt out halfway through the season if they should want to. Uh, in reality, once you start this business season, it's probably a given that you're gonna carry on through the season. But that was a mechanism to allow you to do that, not charge you 500 bucks to wait until, uh, April or, uh, March 10th and then probably the first meeting in April and then possibly the first meeting in May before it's decided on if any ordinance revisions are gonna happen.
And just being my first time to actually renew, is the renewal process the same as, should I in the meantime start preparing my, my map or my, my site map, get all my insurance?
Yes, sir.
The renewal process is basically you're doing a new-
Correct. Okay. Appreciate everybody coming out. Uh, if you've got any questions, our cards are on the table right here and, uh, you can reach us by phone or by email.
Email or push them, please? Email or push them.
I can send it to you on the card and it's just a little code and you're gonna click on it. You can't put it on a personal Facebook page, but you can put it on any business account. It's a don't tab, it's like calling apps, it's a tab and then you have beach flag tab that's real time. Definitely.
Which-